Well, this year and we're able to provide more spay neuter, especially for the shelter animals as well as the city. So I invite anybody in this room to come visit our facility. Let me know if you're interested to come see and I can give you a tour. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
A quick question.
Yeah.
Are the Pluto Cave puppies available yet?
Uh, which ones?
They look like a shepherd mix, the ones that were abandoned at the Pluto Cave.
Yeah, we had two litters, three litters now, I think, in the last month. But, um, yes, yeah, everybody's available. That's on our website.
There you go.
Sometimes they're one, sometimes they're 11, but multiple litters, yeah.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Yeah, let me know. I have, I'll be here all night.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on anything? All right, we'll close public comment, bring it back, and turn it over to Todd for council and staff comments. You want to fire his mic up?
There we go. Thank you, guys. So, just a couple of things. The last council meeting, you know, we presented some very preliminary information about a mobile home park that we had gotten. Some complaints that the rent increases and utility charges were outsized year over year. And so we were going to dig into this issue. We haven't forgotten about it. We've collected a lot of information from residents as well as from the operator of the park. And we're in the process of reviewing it and we'll be bringing it to the next council meeting to discuss. The second thing, last thing, is Castle Creek Daylighting. We have a grant application in with the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. The idea being we submit a preliminary grant so they can look over our cost estimates and, you know, fatal flaw check what we've got. We're starting to get comments back and we're incorporating as we get them and we'll be able to submit probably by the end of the month. So that's what I've got.
Thank you. Any other department notes? Can we get Chief's microphone fired up? There we go.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, uh, for about the last six months, I've been working with the Warricka Police Department Chief to explore the possibility of a combined dispatch center where we would combine for a unified countywide dispatch system. This has included meetings with IT tech, radio people, you know, numerous other issues. Based on the financial estimates provided, at this time, it's not cost effective for the city to move. Well, one of the quotes was $467,000, which my budget for dispatch is 468. So then you add the additional costs there. There was a lower cost, but it wasn't beneficial to the city either because we're going to have to have somebody at the counter taking people walking and stuff like that here. So, reached out to Chief Gilman. He understands because it wasn't much of a savings for him. But there is still hope. Because if we go to a full-time centralized dispatch center, it's going to require all law enforcement agencies to go. This would essentially allow us to have, pay for two dispatchers total versus the four and the supervisor and allow, just based on the number of calls we have through different ones. So it would allow for 11 full-time dispatchers to be in a full dispatch center with about a 50% reduced cost to everybody because everybody gets to cut their dispatching staff by about half. So you see your county counterparts and weed counterparts and stuff. Just let them know it's viable, but it has to be a countywide. It can't be just two agencies going together. We just can't.
Deciding that everybody else has to do it?
Yeah, we can't. There's no savings. Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, so you exploit this solely with Warricka and it wasn't cost effective?
Right.
But you're saying if it was the whole county, it might be?
Right, so basically it would look, based on the number of calls, it would be essentially YPD has six dispatchers. They would go down to three that they would pay for. The Sheriff's Department would pay for three. We would pay for two, weed would pay for two. And then the three smaller agencies could pull their money to pay for another position. And then the other good thing about having these combined with the Sheriff's Department is they already have the repeaters up. So we wouldn't have to have the rental of a repeater or build new repeater system or anything like for radio communications, which was a cost that could be coming with this as well. So I just wanted to let you know that this time we're not going to be going forward because it just doesn't save us any money.
I can, you know, just add that it was about six months ago. We had a conversation with Angela Davis, County Administrator. And, you know, it was just off-the-cuff remark, but, you know, very much interested. So, you know, we'll have to, with a new city manager in Weed. And I don't know if they've got a permanent yet, permanent replacement in Dunsmere yet. But, you know, well, no, they're county, so it'd be Weed. See if we can get them on board, but I'll certainly reach out again to Angela Davis.
And then I'd like to take a moment here to wish a happy birthday to my fellow Marines. This is 250 years. So to happy birthday to all the past and present Marines, 250 years. And then just a reminder, tomorrow is Veterans Day. So I just take a moment to recognize the members of the city we have working who are still serving us. We have Officer Mark St. Clair. He's our newest officer in United States Marine Corps. Officer John Casanova, he's our K-9 with the United States Air Force. And then City Manager, of course, Todd Yoas, has a United States Air Force badge. So just take a moment to recognize our vets for tomorrow and turn it back.
Any other council staff? All right, I'd just like to add that today is the 50th anniversary of the wreck of the Edmund Fitzgerald. And growing up in Michigan, this is very much a holiday that way. And if you don't know what that is, look it up. It's sad, tragic Lake Superior history. All right, moving on to committee updates. Anything new to report on that, Todd?
I don't.
Okay, skip that. Moving on to consent agenda. City Manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added here too shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only. Full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes, October 27th of the 2025 regular meeting. And B, the Police Department monthly report.
I've moved to approve consent agenda items A and B by title only.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? All right, moving on. Number eight, the Mercy Medical Hospital funding presentation. To receive a report, Todd, you have the floor.
Yep. Okay, so got word that Mercy Medical would like to make a presentation about future funding for the facility. And I'm wondering if we've got anybody from...
Good evening. I'm Roger Page. I'm the hospital president here at Mercy Mount Shasta and also the president over our three other most Northern Dignity Health hospitals. And I appreciate the council allowing me to come just share a little bit about what's going on with funding for healthcare in general. And so you've probably heard of HR-1. Or some call it the big beautiful bill and all the things that are going on. So just about, I would say, every health system, independent small hospitals that serve our rural communities, our clinics, FQHCs in our community are all concerned about what could happen with some of the, we've heard a lot from both sides, cuts. And some of them are cuts and some of them are actually reductions in future years. And so I thought I'd just kind of share because we're concerned, right? And I heard an example that somebody used. They said, well, if healthcare were a cake that you bake and you're serving your community and then all of a sudden you need all the ingredients, right? And about probably over 70% of our patients that we cover in our community here are either Medicare, Medi-Cal. And if all of a sudden, some of those ingredients that you need to care for those patients were cut in half, but you're still supposed to deliver that cake, it becomes very difficult. And that's what we're all trying to figure out. If that happens, how do we continue? How do we adjust to continue serving our community? So what I'd like to start out with first, because there was a rumor at one of our, my other hospitals, St. Elizabeth Community Hospital in Red Bluff, and it keeps coming up because it was put on a list that they were closing. And the council down there was concerned. And you may have heard Glenn Medical Center closed. And if you're watching the news, Enlow closed their home health services. So everybody's being strained. But our hospital down there has been in the community for over 100 years. We're committed to our mission. We're going to keep serving it. We're solid. Same here. We all, like any of these healthcare institutions, could be impacted. So do you guys have the, I'd sent some slides. Do you have the slides in front of you or any printouts? If not, I can speak to it. So one of the things that all the medical groups and organizations have been asked is why can't you tell us a number? What is it actually going to do to you? And like I said, it's complicated because some of it, the funding for healthcare comes from many different sources. One of those sources is called Medicaid. And so, which in California is Medi-Cal. And so in Washington, I think they call it Apple and other things. And basically, the government for our Medi-Cal population, those individuals that are called federal medical assistant, that category, the government funds about 50% of the funding that hospitals that care for those patients get. And the state of California funds the other half. So we know there are going to be reductions in the federal government in the current rendition of HR-1 that will come. And we all know that our state has had budget challenges in itself. So the concerns from hospitals is it's unlikely. The states could, each state's going to have to figure that out. They could choose to fund the difference of whatever the cut is. But more than likely, the states are stretched and are going to have a little bit of challenge with that. And so that's where we're trying to figure out, how do we cover that? The other thing that is concerning is that in the new, in the current HR-1 bill, individuals that are currently covered are going to have to show, if you're between the ages of 19 to 64, non-pregnant, if you're not disabled, non-hospitalized, they want to show that you're doing at least 80 hours per month of community service. That could be work, school, volunteer activities. So that's a good thing. They're trying to hope that either people get back to work or they're involved in the community. But the challenge for those individuals to stay on that enrollment is that if they don't go show that they're doing that every month, they'll drop off. And if they drop off, then those individuals could end up in the ERs uncovered. Okay, and we still, we care for every patient that will come into the hospitals. The other thing that's changing is redetermination. So that's every six months, they look at who's eligible for being on Medi-Cal. And that's going to be every six months after January 1st, 2027 currently in the HR-1 as it's defined. And so there's more regulations that either those individuals will have to do or they'll be uninsured. So again, if they come to the hospitals or other clinics, they won't have insurance, may not be covered. So part of the estimation is that it could be 3.5 billion over 10 years or 350 million annually for that. And what's facing the different states is to even, for those individuals to show their requalification, it could be a lack of IT infrastructure to, for the patients to be able to show continually and go back to the state that they're still qualified. And then there's other things that the government in HR-1 is looking at funding, such as SNAP. You guys are all aware of the challenge right now, right? And looks like that'll be getting funded again. But where do they direct the money? Do they do it to SNAP or to some of the funding for a gap if it's there? So that's kind of the piece that's out there, and that's one funding source. There's other things. There's some good news that I wanted to share with the council is that there is a bucket of money for rural hospitals. So in the state of California, there's about 46 hospitals that qualify for rural. In our area, our Common Spirit Hospitals, Dignity Health, there are three. Mount Shasta, St. Elizabeth, and Sierra Nevada, and Grass Valley all qualify. So of those 46 hospitals, they will have an opportunity, working with the state of California, to potentially get some of this rural health transformation fund. So in HR-1, the government set aside 50 billion. And that sounds like a lot, so we're glad that it's there. But what was funding all our rural hospitals prior to that was 150 million. So those programs are closed, so it's 150 million that went away. There's 50 million you can get. The government is giving 25 of that, I said 50 million, it's 50 billion, sorry. 25 billion will go out to the states equally distributed. If the states apply and show by the criteria that they will be able to use those dollars, working with clinics and hospitals that meet that rural designation, to help care for rural communities like ours. And so the good thing is that I was on a call today with the state of California, H-KI. They've been reaching out to individual rural hospitals like Fairchild, us, and others. And they're continuing to try and understand what are the needs? How could these dollars, if we apply and they're able to get it, be able to be served the best in the communities? And so they had to submit that application to the government last Thursday. And then if it's approved, those dollars will start being distributed by the federal government here in December. So that's some good news, is that some dollars could come back because they understand that rural hospitals, rural clinics are at risk. Those activities and how much time do I have, just so I make sure I don't run out?
You're not making public comment. You're a scheduled speaker, so there's no time limit.
Okay, I just want to make sure I give you enough information so that... Yeah, just want to make sure I give you enough information so that it makes sense. So these dollars, you don't, if the state gets them and they distribute it among 46, so California will get their portion, but we have 46, another state might have 10, and they get the same amount. So there's a little bit of flaw in how they're distributing that 25 billion. But it has to go towards, it could provide payments for healthcare providers who are trying to recruit to rural areas. So that's helpful because that's really challenging sometimes. It could help in promoting further advancement of technology like tele, tele-visits, tele-connection with hubs, like a larger hospital, be it Reading or maybe UC Davis, where we're able to get some of that information from patients and those physicians providing it here when they're not able to travel. Could be recruiting clinical workforce, things like that. So the last thing I'll leave you with is, the other reason it's really difficult and you hear a lot of worry is that if the, if the economy gets better and generates more dollars, the impact could be less. If things are changed in what the current HR-1 impact is, and some of that's being discussed right now or will be in the future, that could lessen the impact. But if nothing changed, that the cuts and reductions were spread over 10 years. And so it's a total of 911 billion, billion dollars in reductions or cuts that could happen to healthcare. And that's why, you know, hospitals, again, clinics are concerned. The piece that isn't widely shared is that the majority of that, so 76% of those cuts are in the last five years. So when that went through, it was put after next elections and some other things that will happen. That still doesn't mean that there won't be an impact, as I'm sharing tonight. Because in 2025, on some of the things I just shared, it's estimated to be about 45 million. So we are getting cuts in what our reimbursement is going to be right now. And then it ramps up in '26. It's estimated at 17 billion, 468 billion, 61 billion, and 92 billion. So that's just a little bit about what's going on. I don't know if you have questions, but I want to end with our commitment. And I know our other hospitals and we collaborate together with other community hospitals. We're all working and looking ahead on if these cuts actually occur or as they occur or just reductions. How do we adjust? How do we work with other facilities to maybe reduce our costs and ensure that we're still here caring for our communities and our population? Thank you.
Actually...
Yeah, any questions?
Quick question. I wanted to see if, Steve, you can confirm that my assumption is correct? That with these cuts, the assumption is some people that need care won't seek it. And for those that need the care, they're going to show up in emergency rooms, which means that extra cost is going to be passed along through your healthcare premiums.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And that's part of it is that if you, if you qualified currently for Medi-Cal, hopefully you have a family care provider, right? And we're trying to keep you healthy and out of the hospital or keep up on your issues. If you drop off and you're no longer qualified, you probably won't go see anybody until you're really, really sick. And so it will be a tax on the ERs. They'll still get care in the ER because we care for everybody, whether they can pay or not at any hospital, any ER. But then we treat that issue, discharge you. And if you have an ongoing issue there, you have the problem again. And then you get that revolving door, which is really bad for everybody. So you're absolutely right. That is a potential impact and we're working to try and not have that happen.
Any other questions, Casey?
Thanks for coming and giving us this info here. I know there's a lot of folks wondering. Of that 50 billion that was reduced from the 150 that is going to be potentially available to the 46 rural hospitals in California, so the 50 billion is, so that's split equally. So it's like one billion per state and then that's divided up among the 46?
No.
No.
Good question, and thank you for asking for the clarification. So it's, they have, it used to be 150 billion that went out from federal government. They reduced it to 50. Only 25 billion, which again, still sounds like a lot, is being distributed equally to all the states. The other 25 billion, and that's over five years. The other 25 billion, CMS has not determined how they want to distribute that yet. That's totally up to them. So all the states are applying for the 25 billion. And then it's equally split regardless of the number of rural hospitals. So I think, let me look at my notes here on California. I had the number. I think it's... I can get that number. Where did it go? 100, it comes out to about 100 million is what probably California would get out of that, which is still better than nothing. So we're thankful that there is some for rural hospitals, but you split that across 46 hospitals and the gap that we're trying to make up. And clinics, it's not just hospitals, it's hospitals, clinics, rural care providers. So thank you for that clarification.
Whatever that number ends up being, that it's a reduction from the federal funding per year or over five years, however it's accounted, you're not closing facilities, you're centralized facilities. Your patient loads aren't reducing. You've been forced to be lean and leaner over the past two, three, five, eight years. I'm kind of like our city manager, I'm kind of coming to a supposition which you would kind of comment on it, which is, it appears if you're going to stay in business, you're going to need a lot of support from the states, especially from our state.
Yeah.
State government, especially given cuts to Medicare, which is Medi-Cal here. Excuse me, Medicaid, which is Medi-Cal here. And all those things put together say that there was a, there'll be a rapidly rising set of increased costs with decreased funding at the same time. You can't do much about the people's response to being cut and having to work through the scenario that the city manager brought up. And if the federal government is reducing funds that flow to the small rural hospitals, there's only one provider left, and that's the state. So generally, my question is, you must have representation down at the state level to try and, and as you look ahead, go, are you going to be able to meet? Plug the hole, so to speak. Could you comment on that? Because of course, out of that kind of thinking, maybe mine's flawed, but that's the kind of thinking that goes, well, you guys aren't going to make it. We're going to lose rural hospitals. And I don't know that, but I'm sure I'm glad you're here. And I'd like you to please address that.
So thank you. That's a good question. It's, and it's complex. And so we are fortunate to be part of a larger health system. And we work with the larger health systems. And we have advocates, advocacy arm that works in Washington trying to share some of those components and also here in California. And then with our California hospitals and our smaller independents also, which we are part of, we have the California Hospital Association, which does a lot of advocacy in the hospital council on our behalf to try and share those, the other side of that picture with legislators that sometimes a bill that's passed or a law, regulation seems like a great idea. And it's intended for good, but here's some of the impact. And so California Hospital and others have been sharing with this, or they're, we've got to think creatively, how do we, how do we adjust? And what are some things that might help offset that? And there's other things like seismic regulations that are coming on hospitals with California to have to upgrade to meet earthquake codes. Not a bad idea, but we think it's extreme. And so for like our hospital here, it's eight plus million dollars that we're going to have to put in. And so we're trying to share, and it's millions and millions of dollars across the state for some hospitals. With these reductions, is there anything with the state where they could adjust and look at the areas that are most critical so that we get some relief on some of those types of expenses? There are other things. There's a group called OCA in the state, which is to try and manage healthcare costs. Because we all know it costs a lot. We'd like to pay less. And so they're working on caps and controls, but we're sharing these other pieces because if our minimum wage goes up, which we all feel, right? And food's gone up and standby call that we have to pay. We, it's, they're trying to share if they hold the cost less than our increase, that also makes it difficult on organization. I'll probably give you more detail, but if we can get some relief on that, that helps offset as we're getting less payment. So did that answer your question or did I not answer directly?
As you noted, it's complex.
Yes.
And and maybe there just isn't a bottom line yet. It's unavailable. It's unknowable currently because have to see how things play out, where you get relief, where you don't get relief, how much the state can actually come up with. But it's a, it's certainly a concerning issue for those of us here and the constituents we represent.
One last comment I could say on that, which might help. I am encouraged, like I said, I had a call and some of our leaders with the state, some of the state individuals that put in for the Rural Healthcare Fund. And they have been thinking on how to utilize some of these funds efficiently. And they're thinking of hub and spoke models. And so I'm encouraged that at least they seem to be well-educated on some of the impact and they're seeing what it might do to some of our hospitals. And they're trying to think, how can we maybe do healthcare a little bit differently? Like I said, if you've, how do we keep the spokes, right? The small rural hospitals out there. But if we can't, if they can't do all the services or they can't get a physician to come, can we do maybe some tele-visits or things? And have those physicians where we do have them doing the site visit here by technology?
Right.
So thinking differently. And I'm encouraged that they're, they seem to be aware of some of the challenges out here.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Roger. I just wanted to clarify that my understanding is it doesn't just impact the Mercy clinics. It's the departments within the hospital that aren't the ERs. it's the departments within the hospital that aren't the ERs. So it's the physical rehabilitation, physical therapy, and the OB department and imaging. Is that cascading through the hospital, like is, are you bracing for impact for those departments, or is it, how does that look?
Yeah, one of the concerns, we're looking at all that, because there are some service lines, so if you do imaging or OB, it's always a concern, right? You've probably seen a lot of the rural hospitals, they can't get doctors, they can't afford to be on call, have had to close those. And some service lines in different organizations barely break even. So the worry from a lot of healthcare organizations, if by this funding reduction, they now flip upside down, if too many of them upside, go upside down, then they have to, can they, how can they continue providing those services? So you either try to partner, or some organizations may have to look at reducing some of those pieces, which is not great for the communities, right? Because we need them.
Yeah.
With the healthcare funding that is set aside, that you said the states are applying for, and then individual facilities will be applying to the state then, to get kind of their share of that cake ingredient? I know like with a lot of grant applications, it makes the application more competitive when you can show collaboration between organizations, individuals, anything like that. I don't know if this is a similar process or anything like that, but do you anticipate any need for, to be able to show collaboration between, say, like the city and Mercy, or anything like that, or in the future, when doing these applications?
Possibly, yeah, because again, when we were talking to the state today, yes, once they get the funds, they'll send it out, and then we all have to apply to show how we're, how we're going to work on that. And so sometimes having that letter helps, and sometimes if we're working with other clinics, they like that, to see how we're helping support them, or other hospitals.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll open it up to public comment, if anybody wishes to speak on this. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Bring it back, and I guess that's it, yeah, we're just here to hear.
If you would like, as this progresses, I'm more than happy to come back six months, or if things progress quicker, or whatever, to give an update.
Yeah, if there's a good update, yeah, we'd love to hear that.
I sit on the advisory committee with Roger, so that's kind of where this connection happens, so I can help facilitate if needed to.
Sweet.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. All right, moving on, number nine, the Green DOT Transportation Solutions, presentation of Lake Street for All Active Transportation Improvement Plan, and Ken Kellogg, you can kick it off.
Oh, Todd, never mind, all right. So here to introduce Jeff Schwein from Green DOT Transportation, just as a reminder from folks, the city was awarded just under $160,000 in state planning funds, our transportation growth management funds, for a look at ways to resolve a number of issues on Lake Street in conjunction with money that we already have for the reconstruction of Lake Street between the On and Off Ramp and approximately Rockefeller. And what we want to do here, and it's consistent with our already adopted active transportation plan, is to show progress on that Plan One. Two, is to resolve some of the conflicts between bikes, peds, and vehicles, and one of the main issues that we're seeing on Lake Street is just the extremely high speeds that people derive at times, and see if we can address those issues while making it, you know, a little safer and a little more inviting for bikes and peds. And with that, I'll let Jeff, Jeff take it away.
Great, thank you so much, Todd. Good evening, it's nice to be here, my name's Jeff Schwein, Green DOT Transportation Solutions. Our office is located in Chico, but we have some employees just around other rural parts of California. We focus on rural communities, that's our bread and butter, that's what we, where we recreate, that's where we visit, and that's where we live. So rural communities are near and dear to us, we feel like we understand them, and we've seen a lot of different things happening in rural communities, so we bring that expertise to the table here. So like Todd said, this was a planning grant, and we had a team of transportation planners, grant writers, engineers, and surveyors do a bunch of analysis on the street. And part of that is talking to people and understanding what their issues are, what they see, because we're not the experts, we don't live here, we're not the experts at what's actually happening, we can conceive it from our experience, but, so that was a very important part of this project. So we call it Complete Street, it's kind of a term that not many people understand, but really, you know, the history of streets were, first they were people on streets, and that's how people got around, they moved on them, then the introduction of the automobile, all of our streets are built for automobiles, they're built for metal, not people. So our goal is to make them so they're for people, and that's what a complete street is, to make it more comfortable, make it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, make it more economically feasible for the, for the shops and businesses that want to have activity on the street, and make it a better connection to the places where you're going to, to your house, to your job, to grandma's house, to the shops, of getting around. So that's really the goal of a complete street. We look at Lake Street, we saw this paving project coming in, $2 million, it's basically just going to replace asphalt right in the middle of the street. There's, it's so wide that it might not even get to the end of the, of the project area because of the cost of the paving now. So this will help integrate a project, we're going to have to go get more money, but this will help integrate a project that was coming through anyways, and add these components of a complete street. So I'll talk about public outreach first, we did some community meetings, we did surveys, we canvassed stakeholders within the community to talk about what are, what are the problems that you guys see? And we showed them ideas from other communities of where there was problems, and then the solutions. So we talked to them, we asked them what they thought about some of the solutions that we suggest, we used their input, and then we also use technical analysis and our engineering expertise to figure out what we thought would be good solutions for the street, based on the current practices in the industry, current practices in rural communities, and current practices from around the world, frankly. We take ideas all over the place, and whenever people say, oh, we can't do that, we say, well, somebody can engineer that, because it's been done somewhere. So we try to figure out and come up with a solution for the problem. So lots of feedback. Some of the big concerns, Todd mentioned the speeding, certainly, Lake Street coming down the hill, people are cooking. We get that, if they're coming off the freeway, they're cooking up that little section of the commercial core as well. Lots of strange turning movements in there, and it's just dangerous to be a human being with flesh and bones walking around. So we understand that safety concern. The sidewalk gaps, the sidewalks are not cohesive, there's some lifting and challenges at some of the intersections, they're not compatible with the Americans for Disabilities Act, my grandma could not get down the street with a wheelchair. Snow removal was a big one, people are concerned about snowmobile, snow removal, and we've worked with the city public work staff to try to figure out some solutions on how we would handle snow removal. It will be better than it is today, when we do this project. Limited bike infrastructure, there are some cyclists in town, people want to have that, especially with the advent of the e-bike. Certainly, it's a, it's a good way to get around, and people are recognizing that, so that's becoming part of our mobility culture, and that is a request from the community and from society. And then crosswalks, the visibility, when I consider crosswalks, it's a safety concern. And if there's not a crosswalk there, it's a, it's an access concern to a business or a location destination. So we take our guidance, like I said, kind of from experience with me and my staff, with other consultants, traveling around the world, being good at our industry, being in touch with the progressive approaches to these challenges, and so lots of things that we could apply here. And so then you mesh that with the community input, and we provide ideas. At one of the community meetings, we had them put stickers on things from other communities that they liked or disliked, so we really got a pretty good feeling of what the community would appreciate. So getting into the technical aspects, you know, Lake Street, we looked at it from Rockefeller to the I-5, first, the first on-ramp there, and we couldn't say that this street is the same street the whole way down, it's really not, they're very different uses, very different technical makeup. So we broke it into three sections. We considered the commercial core, the zone from I-5 to Maple Street, the community core, those two, three blocks right there from Maple to Chestnut, and then the residential connector up toward the high school and parks up there, and then residences. So it actually broke out nicely, and then we started getting into the engineering and the surveying, and we were really glad that we had these sections to break right out. So you guys can't see these cross-sections, but I'll tell you just a little bit about the report, and I do have these cross-sections in larger slides at the end, if we wanted to visit them, or if a question came up about them. But, so the report is out in draft form, you can find it on the city's website, and that is out for public comment at this point in time. So we're welcoming comments, I'll tell you the date in a minute when I get to the slide, for a little while here, and appreciate comments from the community, if you guys want to share, hey, you know, go look at this plan, we want to make sure it works for our community. So really what we, these are called cross-sections, and we look at how much right-of-way we have to work with, within a corridor or a section of roadway. And that is from property line to property line, what does the city have control over? And then what can we do in there? Luckily, Lake Street is quite wide comparatively, so there's lots of room to improve. One of the main things that we heard from the community was they want some wider sidewalks, they want cohesive sidewalks from Rockefeller all the way down to the end of the project area, very clear. They want good crossings across some of the streets, there are some streets that are really busy, for instance, on Chestnut Street, where there isn't a crosswalk, you know, you would have to go out of your way to go across and over and down, and people just, will just cruise right across. The term jaywalking comes to mind. So sidewalks that are walkable, navigable, there are some utility poles in the middle of sidewalks, and some other challenges, the ramps at each intersection need to be compatible and up to code. Bike lanes, bike lanes work most of the time, but sometimes they don't. So one of the things with cyclists is, is we want to be protected, they call it protected, have a buffer between us and a car doing 40 miles an hour, or even 20 miles an hour, if you've got kids in tow in the burly behind you. So a buffer is really important, that's one of the solutions we used here. We are maintaining the majority of the parking, and that's really important, we know that for the commerce that happens downtown. So you guys can look at some of these cross-sections in more detail at your leisure, and please comment on what you think of them. So the project costs, there's actually, we have funding problems, okay, we're always underfunded. There are some programs, especially in the state of California, that you can only spend on these types of projects, on active transportation projects. So there's some funding available, those programs have not been cut, that we know of yet, and so we're watching that closely, but, you know, we have to kind of forge forward with the momentum that we have and with the planning that we're doing, and then adjust later. But so far, there are some, some pretty robust funding streams out there for these projects, and you can't just go fill potholes, you can't just spend this money on roads. You can either look for the money and go get it, or you can let someone else in the state go get it. But just a pretty important point, because some people want the money to go somewhere else, and this is really targeted money. So we're looking at about $1.8 million to fund these components of the project, and that's not just the pavement. So we have the $2 million available for the pavement project, these are additional items at about 1.8. And these are estimated at the costs in the year of construction, so it is escalated up to that point. So council presentation tonight, this is where the project is headed, we're, we have the public draft out for review until December 9th, and then anticipate the council reviewing that and considering adoption of the plan, and then we'll move forward with going to seek funding and moving on with the plan. And that's the end of my presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
I love this.
Oh, you do?
Yes. I don't have a question, but this is so needed. My mom lives on Lake Street, I work off of Lake Street, so even in designated crosswalk areas, I almost get hit all the time, so this is, yeah, this is awesome, thank you.
Yes, and to that issue, a lot of these improvements are traffic calming, so you're squeezing, right now the lanes are like 13 to 15 feet, a normal travel lane on I-5 is 12 feet. So you, they're very wide lanes, we're going to squeeze them down a little bit, cars will still be able to move, no problem, but it will help people feel like, I need to go a little slower here, there could be somebody in the road.
Can I add a couple design comments? I know we're kind of pressed for time.
Oh, sorry.
So I think Jeff truncated this a bit. So, one, you may recall, it's about a year, year and a half ago, there was an individual who spoke in public comment about speeding on Lake Street, and she was picked up the next day doing 75. So a lot of the reason we have...
I'm sorry, 75?
75.
I mean, I'm guilty of 40 to 45 myself, but...
So one of, one of the issues why we have speeding on that roadway is because we've got in places, as Jeff mentioned, 15-foot lanes. And the way that you calm traffic is you narrow those lanes to, you know, 11 or 12 feet, and you add bicyclists, and you add pedestrians, because people automatically will then slow down because they see there's life. And in addition, the other part of this, it's an economic development issue, when you've got people that you see out on bikes, and you see people walking, it shows life and activity, and people then, more people come out and they shop in our stores. One design element that, you know, sorry, we didn't get this in the pack, we didn't get the presentation in time, but one of their proposals is, as we're approaching Mount Chasta Boulevard, a little bit past Chestnut, is using, whether that's stamped concrete or something else, a different colored paver to signify that you're in the commercial district. So there are a lot of really interesting elements, and I think besides safety and, you know, for all modes, it really is an economic development driver.
Yeah, as I said, I'm guilty of catching myself doing 40, 45, so narrowing, but narrowing the lanes, yeah, that'll make you pay attention a little bit more, so.
So this potential project, the actual construction, the design and the construction goes, it's more than Lake Street, it actually includes a little part of Everett Memorial?
Yes.
In front of the high school?
Yes.
No, 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 not in front of the high school, in front of the youth sports fields.
It doesn't go past...
Rockefeller.
Rockefeller.
Okay. All right, and it does go all the way to the highway?
Yeah.
Great, all right. I think I'll reserve my other comments till after a public comment.
Any other questions before we do that?
Yeah, I had one question, is there, and maybe we haven't, maybe you haven't really gotten to specifics, and this is part of the public comment, that kind of thing, but is there any thought, I know last year when we were chatting about this, the idea of like roundabouts came up, particularly coming up Lake Street there, and you're, you know, in terms of getting people to slow down, but without disrupting the flow of traffic, and he thought, I didn't see that in here, maybe I missed it.
We did an initial analysis of available space for a roundabout, and it really was not feasible without taking out buildings and collecting property. And so we felt like we didn't really need to put that forward.
Okay. Jeff?
I have some base.
Just one quick one. Given that we do have 15, even 16-foot wide vehicle lanes, and some of these proposals in the residential area are at 11 feet, with commercial vehicles, fire trucks, what? Does that work?
Yes, absolutely. Fire trucks can navigate this. We wouldn't be able to design or build it.
Is the chief nodding? Are you nodding?
There's not a lot of designing.
Yeah, they're not allowed to design it without that, so, okay. All right, any other questions before a public comment?
Add that the roundabout issue will be discussed in more detail when Safe Streets for All is presented here.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
I don't know if it's the next council meeting? Yeah.
All right, well, but up to public comment, if anybody wishes to comment on this.
I just have a quick one, as a mom with two kids that are getting, you know, a little bit older and starting to venture out a little more. I freaking love this too, because our roads are crazy, you know, like we're rural and everything, that's awesome. There's not a lot of traffic. I kind of love that they only have three stoplights, you know? I've never lived in a small town before now, so that's all great, but yeah, the sidewalks are ridiculous, and the crosswalks, and I worry sometimes about my kid riding his bike to and fro. So grant funding, right? So great, I know budget is an issue overall here, but grant funding, I love that this is going up and down Lake Street. I would love if there's potential for grant money. Do we have anything to go up and down, like Mount Shasta Boulevard or Cedar or something, to actually facilitate movement across town that way would be amazing.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close public comment, bring it back. John, you had something you wanted to say?
Okay, so yeah, I'll be enthusiastically supporting this project too, like two other commentators, and I think it's a good example of where we all want our roads, roads in Mount Shasta to head towards. They might not all be the same based on differing issues, but this design will include better sidewalks, bike lanes, and obviously repaving and so forth. I was kind of surprised by the total cost being 1.8 or 3.8 million, including all the paving.
3.8 altogether.
So even that, I find that, I find that a little on the low side, so that's, I mean, that's good. And if the grant funding comes through, great. My one concern is that there's a lot of bad pipes under these streets, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to change, we're going to have to replace all those water pipes and sewer pipes after we do this project. And I've lived in cities, particularly New York City, where they come out and do a great paving job rehab, and I remember Broadway and 116th Street, a beautiful road, Broadway was really improved, and like, within a week, the guys are out cutting, major cutting, and kaboom, it's all ruined. So I think pace, yeah, okay, so Ken's going to tell us how the pipes are.
Yes, we are about to award the design work for the reconstruction of Lake Street, and it will incorporate this, but it's also what I call complete streets, not just the pedestrians and bicycles, but also making sure you're covering all the utilities at the same time. And that will be part of the street design.
One comment on the cost, just so we're not surprised later. These that we did for this project were planning-level cost estimates, so when the design gets further along, that engineer's estimate can be different. So it will likely adjust 10 to 20% from the planning-level cost estimates that we provided. Don't knock that.
Yeah, I was going to say. Anybody else? Good. All right, thank you, Jeff. We'll see you in January 12th.
He's a, he's a reporter.
Yeah, he's a reporter.
Big reporter.
We endorse, we endorse. All right, moving on to number 10, letter of intent to purchase the landing parcels. Todd, you have the floor?
Okay. We're to start with this. So council knows, but just as a refresher from, for those that are listening, the landing, we have been trying to attract developers, and part of the development process, when you're trying to sell government-owned land, you've got to go in California through what's called the Surplus Land Act. And what that means is, you've got to declare your land, the landing, as surplus, and then you've got these certain timeframes that you need to meet. And what we needed to do is, you know, put out an RFP, seeking qualified affordable housing developers, to see if anybody responded to build, you know, their choice on the number of units. In this case, we had one responded by the due date. It consists of two brothers, John and Brian Power, going by the name of the Power Group LLC. They have been out to look at the site, talk to people in the community. They're very experienced, and they would like, through our discussions, they would like to start with a proposal to purchase the east-side landing parcel. That's that, you know, when you're driving from our most, southernmost on-and-off ramp, it's the, obviously, the parcel that's on the east side where the Gateway Trail is being completed. They, as part of this proposal, would set aside 25% of housing units for affordable that meet HCD's criteria, which means they're deed-restricted for 50 years, and thus allowing the rest of the property to be, you know, up for grabs and the ability for us to sell it. So what they've proposed is that they would use the purchase price for that parcel based on the Ryan Valuation Commercial Appraisal that took place about a year, year and a half ago. And that commercial appraisal, for those that don't know these things, it's dependent upon the type of use that is proposed on a particular site and what it's worth per square foot. And what they're saying is that it'll be a combination of single-family property that will sell at a price of about $15,000 per acre, high-density residential at $40,000 per acre, and multifamily at $55,000 an acre. Now, the total acreage for housing on that side of Mount Shasta is about 38 acres with about 2.6 acres of high-density and general commercial. And so the mix, you know, that they come in with development plans for will decide the actual purchase price, but the range is between $644,000 and $683,000. What they've also said is they would like to option the landing on the west side, the two larger parcels, and they want to visit that after they're able to put this in the books. So the terms under this is that they, once they submit development plans at an agreed-upon time, once they have approval for this, that they will close an escrow within 30 days and move from that point. And then the other piece that isn't mentioned in the staff report is they want to get this off the ground on the east side. And on the west side, as I've mentioned before, we have a remaining EPA Brownfield grant money that we're going to use for a master planning process, and we'll go out for an RFP there. They have, we've talked to a bunch of different concerns, and we'll come up with proposed uses, and then hold a series of public meetings to make sure that the mix is right for the community, and we build significant public buy-in to this. We, you know, again, we've talked about this here at council, the aim is to increase living wage jobs and to increase workforce housing opportunities, and the developers have been made aware of that. We've put them in touch with Laurel Harkness here in town, who've talked about these very specific lumber manufacturing facilities, eight or so in a number, you know, a couple adjacent counties, and, you know, including one here potentially in the landing. So they're in contact, as well as, you may remember, four years ago, we were in contact with Robert Kendrick up in Central Point, Oregon. He has a manufacturing facility, a couple manufacturing facilities that build basically the walls for everything from university dormitories to houses within a closed area. It saves materials, it cuts down on, you know, pollution and waste, and he's now in the mix as well as potentially a party that may want to participate in this development, again, creating livable wages. So that's, those are the nuts and bolts.
Any questions? Go ahead, yeah.
City manager, this has been going on for a while, and one of the things I never really was very clear about was, in the 25% or greater affordable housing portion, is it correct to assume that that's all rental, or are there any to own affordable housing?
We talked about that, and that's to be determined in the mix.
Okay.
I think it's probably easier for them to move towards rentals, and I think HCD is more geared toward that as a viable product, but it hasn't dropped off the map. Let me put it this way, and part of this, again, this is all vaporware until we have something signed, but we discussed with them other ways of tackling the workforce housing issue because there are no grants for the missing middle. There, you know, and there aren't the low-interest loans. One of the things we said is, what about potential for cohousing, where you have individual rooms that are rented by workers or, you know, other folks up here, and there are shared common areas for cooking and meetings and that kind of thing. And so they immediately put the thinking caps on, and they saw that the loge is up for sale. And they said that's something that could be easily converted to the cohousing idea, and they've been in talks with them, and they, last time I talked to them, last week, they said they've, the owners have come down significantly in price. They just wanted me, which I'm gathering, to produce five years of TOT data for the city, so they understand what the demand is. And so that's something I'm working on there. But that's a potential purchase that's not even part of the landing, and that would be, you know, another rendition, if we can make it work.
So you mentioned that the purchase price is based on the proposed use of the site? Is that a standard way of doing it, for the person buying it to say what they're going to do, and then it's valued off? And then are those valuations something that's set by like, a state agency, or?
No, we paid a, I don't know what the acronym stands for, an MIA Commercial Appraisal, that's kind of the gold standard in commercial appraising. And you base it on the square footage rate on, partially on what the ROI is likely to be for that developer, and also, you've got, you know, you've also got to take into account what the zoning is for a particular parcel.
So is that purchaser then locked into using it for what they initially purchased it for, to do? I mean, because like, I guess my question is like, what's to stop somebody from coming in, saying they're going to use it for whatever is the sort of like, lowest return, getting the lowest price, and then using it for something different?
Not at all. That's a great question. The appraisal has a rate for anything that can be built on that site under PD zoning, which is our most lenient, and it allows us to, you know, do a whole host of things. But you'd adjust based on what that proposed use would be, in terms of the purchase price. You couldn't pay for the land and then come in and go, surprise, we're doing a high-rise. Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, well, but up to public comment. Anybody wants to comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Comment, public comment, whatever. The affordable part of it, is that just based on the normal valuation of like, the median income for the county, the $44,000 or whatever it is for Siskiyou County?
It is. It's, it's 0 to 60% median family income.
Okay.
And the tough part is that, again, that missing middle, 60 to 120 MFI.
Okay, so they purchase the land, so is there any expectation of what that money's going to be used for, such as being plowed into infrastructure improvements, or?
At this point, undetermined and to be decided by council.
Big raise, okay.
Anyway, are we concluded? All right, so I'm going to move to approve a non-binding, the non-binding proposal to purchase APN 067-010-140, and to approve the options for the potential purchase of parcels APNs 067-10-20 and APN 067-10-10 by the Power Group LLC.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, moving on to resolution authorizing position of building inspectors/plans examiner and affirming hourly wage. And Todd, you have the floor, since I don't see Kim here.
Currently, we've been using development solutions for our building and, you know, official services. And one of the things that we're finding is that the costs are continuing to increase, and we've had to cut back on the number of days that they're up here to stay under our budget cap, which is $105,000, which was what we adopted. And we assumed there were going to be additional increases over time. And so what we decided to do is, and we would save money, is to create a city position that's part-time, three days a week, and we would hire a, one of the officials we've been using from Devcom, who, developers, you know, residents like, that is extremely user-friendly and extremely knowledgeable, and this person would pay for their own health insurance undercover in California, and we would pay them a rate that is under that $105,000. The catch is that he, right now, can do plan check up to, you know, through residential, and he's working on a certification on commercial, and part of this built-in hourly wage is also including the cost of plan check fees for any commercial development that we'd have to send up to WIRICA. And, yeah, so it's a, it's an attempt to save money going into the future, and it's also a known quantity who knows his stuff, and the public likes, staff likes, and is extremely user-friendly.
The $55 an hour that is the base up to 30 hours or, or at 30 hours. You said healthcare wasn't included in that.
Correct.
They, they would pay for their own healthcare?
Yes. They, they have been.
And there would also be residential and/or commercial plan check fees included in that or is that?
This, he would be able to do residential plan check.
Okay.
There's one module that he is in the process of, one last module, he's in the process of completing the coursework on. When he completes that, he would be able to, just like Devcom, also do commercial plan check in-house. Until that happens, we would just send, you know, we'll get, you know, a, a review and, and the ability for a developer to come and sit down with the team and give them a timeline and a package of how you get to yes. And, but we'd have, again, you know, that slight lag time for a little less than a year where we send our plans up for commercial to Wyrika.
Okay, thank you.
There, so the 55 an hour that's being offered, is there, is it anticipated that that will rise once he has that additional certification? Or is this the wage being offered with the idea that he will get that anyway?
The latter.
The latter, okay. So it's not, you're not anticipating bumping that up?
No.
Okay.
Does the, so the, the 105,000 is what you expect you will spend with 16 hours a week?
Yep.
At 55-ish an hour?
Correct.
And does that include, since this person's changing from independent contractor, did you include the cost of payroll taxes and that kind of thing that's going to be?
We did. And, and it's perizable too.
Okay.
Perizable, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, it's, that's included.
Yeah, you only have them at 16, 16, two days a week?
Three days.
That's three, what's?
A day more than we're getting now.
24.
Yes.
I think it's currently a 16, right?
Currently, it's, it's been two because we've cut Devcom's hours back to keep them at that 105.
Yeah, it's, it's 68,000 prior to taxes and pension, yeah. But no medical.
Any other questions? All right, we'll turn this, open it up to public comment if anybody wishes to speak on this.
Aloha.
Aloha.
I just thought it was interesting. I have a buddy that's really into sports with the Bears and we did chain gang for the homecoming game. And so he actually has a pass in, so he does this now. He's in Eureka. And so when I showed him the, what's going on here, he had some comments, so maybe he wanted me to share it and, you know, throw it out there. Says, "Two years ago, we had an independent inspector slash plans examiner that was only costing the city 35,000 and they took it away from him. The city of Mount Shasta doesn't have enough building going on to have a full-time plans examiner and building official. You could literally go back to the same guy and offer him 50K contract, third party. No perks, no insurance, none of that stuff, and I bet you he'll take it. I actually happen to know him. The reason I know about this is because when Dave Smith was the plans examiner and building official for the city of Mount Shasta, when he retired, he offered me his business. That business included the city of Dunsmere, city of Mount Shasta, city of Wyrika. Just go back two years, three years and ask what the city of Mount Shasta was paying. I know that the wages have gone up, but if you say 50 grand, that brings back a firefighter. I'm over in Wyrika all week for the, for work, so I can't make it. It's really interesting how it's going. Also, for 105 a year, I'll take that job." So, just saying there's interest and I wish we could be more helpful, but thank you.
Anyone else? All right, close public comment, bring it back to council.
So we've been getting by with two days a week, but we anticipate needing three days a week? Or we just have the ability to do so or what's?
We do. We, we, we need, yeah, we do. At, at our busiest times.
City manager, the, the 30 hours a week, which is what this is based on. The ebb and flow of, of demand levels of, of not just plan check services, but inspection services. It's 30, 40, 50, 60 hours at some times a year and not so at others. If this, when they're independent, when they're independent contractors, it seems like that would be easier to move up and down and manage a total annual budget. Does it, does that handcuff us in any way by having a, a city employee where we, they just only going to work 30 hours? And that's, even when there's very little going on and only going to work 30 hours when there's a whole lot going on? Do you see where I'm trying to go with this? Can you, can you help me understand?
This person, if I understand your question correctly, coming on, also knows planning and some other concerns that we could easily plug this, him into. And when there are downtimes, that is an opportunity to drive around town to look, you know, just to see what kind of development is happening, ensure that folks have permits. And there's one other piece to take into account here. And again, it hasn't happened, but we've been working on a master fee schedule for some time now. A lot of the, the cost for this individual are going to be, if not fully, mostly covered if we do adopt the all-in rate, at least with the building official, as part of that master fee schedule.
All right, see if we got a motion? There's nothing else?
The question is, we, can we do better? And the city manager doesn't think so. He thinks this is a good neutral way to go. Would you say that's about right? Neutral in that the money spent are the same? And it's actually, it's favorable to us in all because there's more hours available to the, for the duties, right? At the same cost?
At the same cost. And we have the ability to use the other skills that he's, he's, you know, he's, he's got some, he's somebody with 35 plus.
Do you think it's a good value?
A good point to make too is that we have previously approved the amount in the budget. So right now, we're really just approving, switching it from a contract to an employee.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right, I'm, I'm going to move to approve resolution CCR-25 dash. Come on, clerk. City deputy clerk. All right, number to be determined. All right. CCR-25, number following the previous resolution, a resolution of the city council of the city of Mount Shasta authorizing the job position of building inspector dash plans examiner and affirming the hourly wage.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Is none? All right, moving on. Use of remaining Prop 68 funding. Todd, let's keep it rolling.
Okay. Prop 68 funding, for those that don't know, is essentially, I mean, I can go into the name of, no, thank you, I won't. Appreciate that. It's basically state parks funding. We were awarded just under 180,000 in 2018. And it was for three projects. And for visitor center, for landscaping and repaving that parking lot. It was for the redesign of the landscape at city hall. And it was also for another project that was called Chestnut Park that nobody, or so far, I'm not sure who submitted, but we don't really know what that was, other than it was related to the viewer to Mount Shasta that's on Chestnut Street and additional landscaping. And so where we're at now is we, the city, earlier this, very early in this year, purchased two parcels on Chestnut Street that are adjacent to Castle that are to be used for public parking, you know, with the assumption that we build, and that we can provide additional public parking in case a one-way Chestnut, one-way Mount Shasta moves forward and/or the daylighting of Castle Creek. And so what we've done is we're, we're reprogramming funds that are left available for the design and build of that parking lot, which is about $90,000. So what we've done is we finished the landscaping at the visitor center. We didn't pave the lot. And what we learned is that the, the roof there is failing. So we've got a bid on replacing that roof and we added a little bit of contingency there. And at city hall, instead of the redesigning the landscape, we want to use some of that money to take down a large and problem tree before it ends up in the roadway and be, you know, becomes a severe claim that we need to pay. And then finally, reprogramming the Chestnut Park, you know, in order to pay for that $90,000 of design and construction of that public parking lot. And with that, we have an estimated $48,000 remaining. We have until 2028 to spend it. And if we're reprogramming other stuff, it might be time to look at that $48,000 in other ways that we can put that to use, as long as it fits the grant criteria and it's related to parks in some way.
Because we bought that property to pave it for parking, if the Castle Creek and/or one-way of both Mount Shasta and Chestnut happen, in the meantime, is there any thought once it's paved to just spending a little money and putting a bunch of picnic tables and having it host a couple of food trucks down at the back end of it?
The world is council's oyster.
Thank you, city manager.
Any other questions? Open it up to public comment. All right, seeing none.
I just wanted to kind of force this issue to come to the fore. It's only $48,000, not a lot of money. My first concern is that the actual cost of building that parking lot is going to be higher than 90,000. So once that's clarified, I'd be a little bit more confident about what to do with 48,000. In that area, there's a number of things that are broken or things that have been planned to be done by DIAC that aren't quite finished yet. They're somewhat park-related. And lastly, there's the Mount Shasta Recreation and Park District that could definitely use the money and they wouldn't mind a donation. And it would be used for park services. I don't know if that transfer is available. I have a feeling it could be done, but those are my thoughts on the issues. Oh, one of the things that are undone, those garbage can things, I think there's maybe one or two more need to be purchased and that would finish that project. There's the utility box wraps that maybe there's three to five left, but definitely three, that were intended to be done by DIAC. Sculpture deal is complete. And of course, we have the non-functioning.
Wrap up loose ends that way.
Yeah, I meant for 48,000, wrap up loose ends.
Maybe come up with another couple items on that list.
Yeah. So anyhow, that's my feelings, but I think the first thing is to get confidence in the, the construction numbers of that parking lot. 90 seems reasonably high. This is a pub, public, public works, city jobs, so it's going to be prevailing wage job. And I'm thinking, I'm thinking maybe that's not enough. I'm not sure.
You're saying you think that?
$90,000 for that paving job, is that, is that high enough? Yeah.
I feel, I, I can always be surprised with the way market goes. But I think that's more than enough right now. I, I'd be surprised if it exceeded that. We'll have it out, we'll have a package ready to go out to bid here fairly soon, so we'll be getting some solid numbers back.
So, so with that said, you want to, do you want to hold off on committing any of the funds until, until those bids come in? Would that be wise?
I was just going to suggest getting the clock fixed.
And the temperature reader, yeah.
But yes.
Some more, some more loose ends to go with the trash cans, the wraps.
But yes, I agree with the paving.
Utility box.
Did you find anyone that could fix those things? Is there any specialists that, that work on those type of things? Like Ken was going to look at.
I floated it and I didn't bird dog it internally. So I need to follow up.
I bet you that'd be a little more expensive than we think it will be because it'll probably be somebody specialist from the Bay Area or LA that has to come all the way up.
If, if that fits with, under the grant parameters, that's, I mean, it's just my opinion, but I think that's an embarrassment. It's a must.
You, you think it should be fixed independent of the grant?
Yeah. Or either, well, if it, either way, I mean, I.
Well, how about taking them down? If they're broken, how about that?
Okay, I finally caught up with what you asked. You're talking about the clock and the thermometer. Yeah, we, we've tried to get them fixed. We tried to get parts for them. We, no luck. So yeah, we're shopping replacements.
Okay, well, that's going to take some money. And that's kind of park-oriented. Kind of. The parking lot is, how's that park-oriented? But it sounds like it's okay, right?
Your call.
No, no, is it okay by the powers that be?
Yeah, they checked off on that parking lot thing? Or did you phrase it in such a way that it?
I don't know if I'm following, maybe I'm just slow.
So it's park, the, Prop 68 is supposed to be parkland. So we got a 177 like all the other municipalities and this, in this park district. They spent it, most of it on the roof above, above us. You've, you've done some real aligning of those funds and one of them is the $90,000 and you, how did you pull that off? Because it's not park-like.
It's, it's qualifying. We made the argument that it's adjacent to, to the daylighting of Castle Creek.
Nice. And, and so the clock and, clock and temperature reader could be part of the daylighting Creek project too.
Yeah.
There you go.
It's consistent.
We had a consistent argument going there at that point.
Go ahead, Jeffrey.
Because we all want that fixed or removed, don't we? I mean, come on. Things have to work. It makes it feel like your city works when things work. I'm sorry.
We're broke.
No, we got $48,000 left, come on. I think, I think that will eat up a lot of that 48,000.
Well, I support a, a number of those things that you were talking about. We got to wait till we know what the final numbers are for paving, obviously. The. The, and there's various DIAC and clock, temperature things that need to get fixed. The reason I brought up food trucks, because the incremental cost to throw some picnic tables and, and or whatever is the right thing to do, I'm not trying to micromanage that, but I'm trying to, that potentially brings incremental sales tax revenue to the city. I'm trying not to just spend money, but have something that has a return relative to our revenues, which is an ongoing focus. And, and I don't think it's much money to, I think you can get two food trucks down there at the end. And if you threw some parking spaces like you were already planning to have on, on one end and, and, but down at the back end, you have a couple of food trucks and some bench table combo things, it can't cost a lot of money. I, I think it would add a nice dimension to the town and bring, also bring in some revenues.
I, I think, I think you're right. I think, you know, part of this is figuring out what a, you know, an appropriate path is for parking a truck and then seeking, you know, some type of rent from the cart owner and, you know, in, in addition to that sales tax revenue, I think it's a good idea.
So carry on with that. So I don't, I don't think that's going to change the cost of doing the project, because all you, all you're going to do is take parking spaces and a, and set up a spot for people to rent.
Right.
And then you have to make sure they pay their sales taxes, gonna be cash-oriented, but anyhow, let's not get into that. The, so that wouldn't really affect the ninety thousand, you're just gonna change the striping?
No, not at all. But what it does is, you know.
Because the trucks are self-contained with respect to water and power, just like Kosopina is behind Chevron, right? That would be my prime.
You know, and essentially, you know, we make it clear to the, the folks that are renting these plots that they're available to them until demand gets to a point that, such that we need to, you know.
Make them parking spaces again.
Available for parking. And then that's the time, if we're gonna do a pilot project on actually introducing, you know, pay for parking in the city, you introduce app-based parking fees and you, you use that lot as that, as that, you know, that kind of guinea pig for the city.
That was actually my question. As part of that project for that, that, those lots, is there city power available? Would, would there be available city power for any food trucks that we're renting it potentially? Or if we decide to say, go with like a paid parking model and we had some sort of kiosk that was like a self-contained parking kiosk thing, would that have available power right there pretty easily, like within the scope of the existing project?
Well, actually, I doubt the food trucks that need power. Quite often, they have their own generator. But yes, this plan has like both lampposts and outlets.
And frankly, when we talk about design, I mean, Ken already has a, a parking layout. He's shot grades out there and determined how water is going to flow. A lot of it, that's gonna be done in-house. It's, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's really, it's really gonna come down to the cost of paving if we do all that design in-house.
All right, so I'm gonna move to table this until the first meeting. And, well, how long will it take for the bidding process? Are you talking February before you have an answer? Total time on the bidding and getting responses?
Yeah, bid responses, February and in February would be great.
Okay, second meeting in February. So move to table this item until the second meeting in February.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? All right. Moving on, number thirteen, fire department job description updates. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor and council. I just went through the job descriptions we have currently for the fire captains and the firefighters and updated some of the certification verbiage and the state fire marshal lingo that's now for the current positions. So in theory, it's just small tweaks of updating verbiage for those two job descriptions on the factor of just making them current.
I think the, the point of the engineer position is it requires, you know, significant experience as a firefighter, but it doesn't require the qualifications that we normally would expect from a captain, because we're having a hard time coming up with qualified applicants that fit the bill for that captain slot.
No questions?
And that's the next item on there is the fire engineer.
It's a new job description for the ability to draw from a little less qualification level to fill seats right now. We've been through a couple interview processes and with the shift style that we have at the moment, it's becoming tougher and tougher to fill the seats of the current positions. So for with that, to change from two captains on the approved positions to one captain, one engineer, and two firefighters. And the pay scale was included for the lower, in between the captain and firefighter.
Any questions?
Of the, I guess, two similar questions. Of the folks that are currently employed there, are there people that would qualify as an engineer but not as a captain currently?
Possibly. But I think the bigger draw is within the county, there's a lot more ability to fill an engineer spot right now, I think, than an actual captain's position.
Okay. So it's more about filling vacancy than it is about?
Just retitling it to a lower, and it'll make for more stepping stones, hopefully, in the future for, you know, if we get to that point of building the department up.
All right, we'll open up the public comment. Anybody wishes to speak on this? All right, seeing none, we'll close it, bring it back. Got a motion?
Okay. Just to clarify, just to clarify, we're on number thirteen, which is.
Yes.
An update for the firefighter position. So I'll move to approve, move to approve updates to the job description for firefighter.
As well as fire captain on there.
It should, it should say fire captain, too? Because the next, the next one is engineer. Okay. So I'll move to approve updates to the job description for firefighter and fire captain. That's number thirteen.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? All right, now moving on to the new position of fire engineer. You get to say everything again.
So thank you, mayor and council, but we're just looking for a job classification between firefighter and fire captain for the ability to have higher a position. Before, in the last few interview processes, we've come up to constraints of hiring captains due to qualifications as well as the shift style available with the intent to have another job classification with some lower standards to hopefully entice more local interest to fill the position that we have coming vacant again.
No questions. All right, we'll open this up to public comment. All right, we'll bring it back. Do we got a motion?
Creation of a new position called fire engineer and the, the details regarding that position as stated.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? All right, moving on, outside meetings, anything?
So, Collier group, we had a meeting. It looked like our, our available cash is hovering in the seven thousand, seven to eight thousand, seven, seven thousand, seventy-five hundred range. Money's coming in versus money's going out. So the agency is, is surviving and we're looking for other sources of income. The city's money was received happily, the one thousand dollar donation. So we're looking for grants and other sources of, of funds. My feeling is a little more optimistic because the, the person that manages the organization, Debbie, she is, she was nervous and sounding a little shaky about it months ago, but since, since then, I've missed most of the meetings because I've been too busy through the summer, but she seems a little bit more confident about the situation now. So we'll see how things go. We'll have one more meeting this year and next week and special day instead of the usual pattern. And then we won't meet again until January. Yeah, so. The Collier interpretive and information center goes on.
Long where they live. All right, moving on to future agenda items. Right now, we have is the master fee schedules. Anybody wish to add anything at this time?
I got some potentially. I had some folks, some folks, somebody brought it up at a meeting and I had some folks in the, in the public asking about potential vacancy tax on residential homes that sit vacant for, I mean, we would decide on the terms of it, but having staff look into that if people are interested.
Is there a second on that?
I'll, I'll second that one.
Okay, cool.
It's worth investigating.
Yes, it is.
That will take some time.
Yeah, something for 2026. Anybody else?
Just wanted to clarify, it's not gonna be an agenda item, but we're all in favor of letting the mayor finish, administer the whole next meeting. That would be on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, the shift change on the December.
And we'll have the vote. Is everyone gonna be here? I will. Is everyone gonna be here for the December meeting?
Yeah.
The one, only one we have?
It's Monday, December first, and then it's Monday, December eighth.
You won't be here on the eighth?
No.
Okay.
I'll be in Las Vegas.
You can join us from the casino, right? Throw the laptop up?
So there'll be four of us?
Yes. Yeah, you just need the address of the hotel. You can do that, yeah. All right, we'll worry about that. All right, any other agenda items? All right, this meeting is, oh, Todd, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, Councilman Globin, I don't know if you mentioned it upfront, I, you know, if you did, I missed it, about a change.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I can mention that as well. I had something else that was brought up about potentially just either instituting like a sec, for each item, letting members of the public speak after, like city staff and things have, have talked about it. Just because there was concern that folks don't necessarily know the info, so they don't know the questions to ask of the folks doing the presentations until after it's given, but by that point, public comment period is over. So there was talk of.
So changing up the Roberts rules?
Just changing up the, the order of it potentially, or adding a second public comment period for it. And it could be something along the lines of, we're worried about, you know, having the meetings go really long. It could be something where like, you can only, you know, address each item once still or something like that, so it doesn't add to the overall time. But just giving folks in the, in the audience or in general, an opportunity.
So you want the initial public comment.
Followed by a second public comment on the same item.
Just have a second public comment.
Just the second one, and it could be something like you choose one or the other, basically.
We finished and then we have outside.
So, so we do the questions, we go to the public comment, then we close it, bring it back to conversation, and then after that, before we vote anything, we offer up a second public comment on that agenda item? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, he's talking about a general public comment at near the end of the meeting.
Oh, not at per agenda.
Oh, I was talking about per agenda, actually.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, I was, and, and just moving it so that people have an opportunity to digest what is said, put their thoughts in, and then make comment on, on it, rather than having to do it ahead of time if they're not overly familiar.
So just change up Roberts rules?
Basically.
Is that something we can even do? I don't think it's Roberts rules.
No idea.
I think, yeah, we need to check into the legality of that.
How many times does everybody get a chance?
The pattern now is staff, staff, typically staff presents the agenda item. There's clarifying questions by.
Counsel.
Counsel.
When that is over, we move into public comment.
And then that has to be controlled, because a lot of times we start debating stuff and we shouldn't. And then public comment, and then back to discussion debate.
Because we accept the public comment then into our, to incorporate into our conversation before we vote.
That's been the.
But you're, you're suggesting in between our conversation and voting, there's a second public comment?
I, when you initially brought it up, I thought you were saying after the city manager and the other department heads make their report. And I was gonna suggest that they need to look at the, because Todd posts his stuff on the website, so if they're like not knowing what's going on.
I mean, the information pad that's already available to everybody, they just have to read them themselves.
And to be clear that it's not a Q and A time, so they can't come and ask questions about it. It's just about making their comments, which I think we're doing well, but.
Yeah, I'm a stickler for that. Except the one time I forgot. I have not forgiven myself.
You forgot the public comment?
Once. This whole damn year, once, I failed.
Batting, that's a really high batting average.
All right, any other agenda items to be added? All right, I'll see you guys in two weeks. Yep, once, I forgot to say.
I must have not been at that meeting, I don't remember.
No, you were the one who told me I fucked up.
I did, oh. See, a lack of sleep, my memories are real short.
Well, you were there, stack.